I call to order. I call to order the committee of the whole meeting for the Birmingham City Council. Today is Wednesday, January 18th. The time is 3:32 PM. For the records, we do have a quorum of councilors attending. And so first item, councilors, I'd like to welcome those of the public in attendance who are here this afternoon. Our first item, and we'll follow the agenda as it's printed, our approval of the minutes. So I'd like to call for a motion and a second for the minutes of the special call committee, the whole meeting that was held Thursday, December 15th. Do I have a motion and a second?
A move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, those minutes are approved. We have four items before us this afternoon, councilors, that are for our review and for presentation. And the first item is the annual comprehensive financial report, which will be presented by Aaron Saxton, the acting chief financial officer of the Department of Finance. And he's also provided a packet for us, and you got some of this information by email as well. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I'm Aaron Saxton, and I serve as acting chief financial officer for the
of Shepard Harrison Associates. And we were contracted to perform the 6/30/2022 annual audit. And on page one is our opinion. We issued an unmodified opinion on the financial statement, which is a clean opinion. And it simply says, "The financial statements are fairly stated." Mr. Saxton would go through a little detail or summary of those financial statements. So I'll turn it back over in the hands of Mr. Saxton for further detail.
If you could turn with me to page 10 of the report in the management discussion and analysis section. Going to talk to you about the results of operations for fiscal year '22 in various funds, starting with the general fund. For '22, we experienced a surplus of $81 million due to strong revenue growth and continued expense management. Our revenues were $66.5 million over budget. Business taxes that we collected were, we collected $40.6 million more in '22 than we did in the prior year. Sales and use tax revenue increased by 12% at $22.6 million. Business license revenue increased by $9 million over the prior year, an increase of 12%. Occupational tax increased by 7.6 million, or 7%. And finally, lodging tax revenue increased by 32%. The dollar amount of the increase was $1.1 million. That's the revenue side. On the expense side, expenses incurred were $10 million less than the original budget. And the largest savings were found in salaries and wages, a savings of $3 million, fringes, being healthcare pension fringes, in the amount of $7 million. And savings in the line item described as economic incentive payments of $2 million. That summarizes the operations for the general fund. I'm just going to briefly talk about ARP and the Birmingham Fund. ARP received its first tranche of funding in May of '21. The second tranche came in, in this past fiscal year, in June of '22. Each tranche of funding was $70.6 million. And you'll notice on that little chart, right under, at the top of page 10, you'll notice on the ARP line item that the beginning balance for fund balance is blank, there's no increase or decrease, and there's no ending fund balance. That's because ARP funds by its nature are grant funds. We only, we only record revenues in the amount of the expenditures that were incurred. So the expenses for '22, we expended $27.2 million on BRT, capital expenditures for World Games, public safety, vacation buyout, citywide redistricting, and personal service contracts to assist in applying for grant funding. And that kind of summarizes the operations for ARP in '22. And Birmingham Fund, you can see on that same chart that there was a decrease in fund balance of $13.9 million. And that was due to unrealized investment losses in the Birmingham Fund. And that's related to market conditions. And that's really all that I had in the form of a presentation, but we could take questions at this time.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Saxton, for providing this information. Councilors, are there any questions regarding the information that's been presented so far? I know we've had time to really thoroughly peruse this. We got an overview of it earlier today by email. Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I just have one question on page 10, the grants fund. So the ARPA funds, are they included in the grants fund, or are they?
No, ma'am, they're broken out separately.
Okay, so this grants fund is truly just grants that we've received and match money?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor, I just want to clarify that statement. Just with the ARPA funds, we want to make sure that we don't put them in any funds that will co-mingle the funds. We want to keep them separate just for accounting, so we can make sure that when we do our quarterly updates to the Treasury Department, we can track the balance. So that's why we keep it totally separate from the grants fund.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that I understood what he said, since we're just seeing this and listening and reading. Unlike the mayor, walking and chewing gum is not that easy.
All right, thank you. Counselor Williams, do you have questions? I thought I saw your motion, but you had a question. Anyone else?
All right, thank you again. And of course, Chief, we would like an opportunity later if we have questions, can we route those to you or through the government of Bernstein?
Yes, just make sure you just send them to me and Ms. Camila Gray Lewis, and then we'll get you the answer. If I, just a little point of privilege, just to let, I know the audits are usually not that sexy, because it's just a lot of numbers and a lot of, you know, bar graphs that a lot of people just don't understand. But I think this is one of those pivotal moments for us where we realized a significant surplus based off of just how our revenues have increased, especially coming off of COVID. As Mr. Saxton noted, that a lot of our revenues are up and a lot of our expenses are down, which really constituted the whole surplus. So I just didn't want that to go unnoticed, because I think we do have a conservative budget at times, and we have to do that because we have so many unknowns. But as you can see, and as is noted in the audit, that this is one of those years that we actually want to take these funds and the surplus and reinvest it back into one of our employees and to the community.
I do have a question, if you'll allow me, councilors. For the ARPA funds, how will that be presented to us, or what manner, so that we can follow that in a similar pattern?
So I know that the stimulus command team has sent each counselor an airtable that lists every project in the status of each project. I think we'll take a further step and just start showing more accounting, you know, the balances once everything is expanded, because if you notice, it's been a large influx of more projects coming before the council to be approved. I think if I'm answering your question right, I think we'll be more transparent with the actual, how much is left. And especially with the Treasury right now, working with Congress to extend how the funds can be expended with the new ruling that should be available in, I think they said, February, which will definitely keep the council abreast of that and what comes out of what the Congress approves, that we think and pretty much know that they have expanded the ruling to include a lot of infrastructure projects that I know are top of line for a lot of the councils when it comes to their ARPA funds.
Thank you, that's exactly the direction I was going with the next question. I know National League of Cities did send some communication, I believe it was forwarded to us. There were some emails and just some updates that the federal government had. They were, I'm not going to say they're lessening some of their requirements, but they are changing. So I did want to ask, how would that impact us for decisions we've already made that may not already be finalized? Or what do you anticipate, just from a financial standpoint?
I think it's just having an open conversation with Mr. Hatcher, and just letting him know once another ruling is made, we can go back and amend any of your decisions, or you can outweigh your priorities in a different way with the administration. Like, we're not trying to hamstring the council on what they're trying to do with the projects, but we just want to make sure that everything is in line with the final ruling from the Treasury Department. So if the council feels like they want to amend their project list, more than willing, as long as it's within the $3 million allocated.
And you expect those guidelines to come out and be more formal or finalized in February?
They said mid-February, so we're just, we're going to keep track of it along with everybody and make sure that we figure it out and update the council appropriately.
Thank you, Ms. Abbott, I thought I saw you had another question. Thank you.
Yes, one other question, the pension plan. What has the '22, '23 year done to our pension plan? I know the stock markets have not been so fabulous and so, are we deeper in the hole?
No, well, I wouldn't say that, because with the legislation that was passed this last, I think it was two years ago, or maybe a year ago, where we had a bill passed where we don't have an unfunded liability anymore on our pension program. So even with the budget that we submitted for the '23 budget, that pretty much closed the gap, at least to a point where it's more manageable and it's not an underfunded pension liability when it comes to our pension. Mr. Saxton can speak on that and give it more clarification, and then speak to the investment parts of the pension program.
We are funding our obligations for the pension plan, meeting the ADAC, like we went to the legislature and had done. We've been funding that, but I think what you were really getting at was our investments for the pension plan. They did, just like every other portfolio, took some hits, especially in equities, based on market conditions. I think the pension plan really had planned for some of that and set some cash to the side, so that they wouldn't have so much tied up in equities. And that helped limit the losses.
Okay, so then my last related question, as far as the pension plan is concerned, are we going to continue to increase our contributions so that we get back where we're supposed to be?
Our contributions are set now by an actuary. And they're independent of the city. They do valuations each year to determine what the employer contribution should be. And that's what, that's what we call the ADAC, the Actuarially Determined Contribution. And so we meet that each year. And we're required to now by statute.
Okay, so they're just going to tell us what we have to do, and we just have to do it?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am. It's a lot of assumptions and law forms that's taken into consideration by the actuary that gives us that output of how much we need to put into the contribution of the pension plan from a city's perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, councilors?
I do want to thank the financial team, and especially Ms. Harris, thank you so much for you and your audit team, and the work that you provide for the city, and giving us the great reports.
Yeah, I do want to note Ms. Connie Shepard Harris and her group. I think we have used you for the last two years. So this is one of those minority firms that we have leaned on very heavily, once we built her capacity to be one of the external auditors for the city of Birmingham. So we just wanted to put a face, a name to a face, so you see that we're moving forward when it comes to minority participation.
Very good, thank you so much, appreciate the work you do, thank you. Appreciate Mayor Whitman for going through with that, what he said he would do in that vein.
Yes, Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Along those lines, Chief Mitchell, is there a limit to how many years, consecutive years, we can use the same audit firm, or are there any?
No, it's nothing in a written policy, but in a sense of transparency, we will probably do a RFP-type proposal for next year, given the fact that they have been auditors for the last two years. But we do want to give other people's opportunity.
Yeah, I'm not suggesting, I know sometimes there's a policy that you change every so many years. I was just wondering if we had?
I think that was in past administrations.
Okay, thank you.
If I could comment, yeah, we changed over every three years under, in the past, to make sure that no one firm was always getting all the business. And also to have somebody come and check up and make sure that they were right.
Well, thank you. All right, thank you very much. Councilors, we'll now draw attention to the next item, and again, thank everyone for that presentation. We have two items that sort of closely mirror each other, but we'll take them separately. The first is a resolution of intent for cultural and historical assets owned and operated by the city of Birmingham. And that will be presented to us by our chief of operations, Mr. Chaz Mitchell, and he'll follow up with that, with the resolution of intent for the city of Birmingham employees. So Chief Mitchell, you're on.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. So before the council, that was presented a couple of weeks ago at Budget and Finance, the mayor has a very strong intent to try and support, one, our cultural and entertainment facilities, and, two, our employees at the city of Birmingham. What's before the council is this, two resolutions of intent, that one will fund a 5% cost of living increase for all city employees. The mayor has noted that this will be one of those pivotal moments where we are able to give our employees, based off of the surplus that was just presented, a 10% increase in less than a year's time, to help offset a lot of the costs and retention and recruitment, and just being competitive in this market when it comes to other municipalities and other businesses. So right now, what's before that council is, like I said, the 5% cost of living increase that will benefit every employee at the city of Birmingham. The second part of that intent also speaks to increasing personnel for our Birmingham Fire and Rescue Services. They have a very aggressive program where they're trying to hire and retain a lot of firefighters, paramedics, to work for the Birmingham Fire and Rescue Service. Last year, they had a historical time, if you want to call it, for amount of call of services. And of course, you have to have the personnel to answer those calls of service, because that's very important for us, and to them, to make sure that the wait time is down, and them getting from a fire station to that particular call. So what's before the council is some personnel that they need to kind of show up, a lot of the fire stations that's kind of short-staffed right now. And that will help them significantly with their recruitment and retention in just that department alone. I'll leave it there, if the council has any questions.
Thank you. Any questions regarding that particular resolution of intent?
I do want to just ask, so the fire department is fully staffed with all their budgeted positions currently?
Yes, ma'am.
So they don't have labor shortages like other departments have?
No, it kind of speaks to, like I said, that a lot of departments, including Birmingham Fire and Rescue, Birmingham Police Department, other departments have kind of created their own retention and recruitment program. And it's just based off, you know, who wants to apply for that division. I think it's just, everybody's very aggressive with their recruitment, and I think Birmingham Fire and Rescue just has more of an influence and more of a interest in becoming more firefighters or fire apparatus. And let me just kind of speak to this also, and Chief Sparks can jump in too, if I'm speaking out of line. They have a lot of positions also that they are trying to retain and do a lot of promotions within the department to help. So it's kind of one of those things, is that as people move up, we have vacant positions, and we just want to backfill a lot of those positions.
Okay, but they don't have a lot of vacant positions already?
Not at this current moment, no. That's why the request came from the fire chief to input these positions back into the budget.
Okay.
Thank you. Counselor Williams, I think you had a follow-up question for that?
Do I remember correctly that we took out positions a couple of years ago? So this is just restoring them to where they were, this is just restoring the number of positions to what we took out?
That is correct. That was during the COVID budget, when we had to make a lot of drastic cuts to a lot of departments. So this is kind of, not a, I would say, a good faith to return them back to the Fire and Rescue, but they have shown aggressive recruitment to where they can fill these positions in a more fast-paced method, and that's why we're more comfortable giving this to the council for consideration.
Thank you very much. Any other questions regarding that one? Thank you, Chief. Now we'll go on to the next one.
Thank you, Madam President. So what's before the council is the second resolution of intent that speaks to our facilities. So that particular resolution has four entities that we can go line by line and just give a brief update on. The first one that we have is Rickwood Field Improvements. As we noted, and I know, and I hate to call out, but Ms. Abbott has been known to say that we need to start taking care of our stuff, and our buildings. So I think it is the intent of this resolution and the funding that we just presented to the council, to put our money where our mouth is. So right now, the first one is Rickwood Field. Well, we are aggressively working with the Friends of Rickwood, almost on a bi-weekly rate of pace right now to do major upgrades to that facility. If you noted, in the last couple of months, they had a very successful event called Savannah Bananas. That was a sold-out event. And that kind of put us on the map, and them on the map, with trying to recruit other bigger audiences to Rickwood Field. So what's before the council is a $2 million investment that will match, hopefully, the recruitment, not the recruitment, the engagement of the Friends of Rickwood to go out and try and raise funds that match our $2 million investment. It's a lot of things that need to be done on that particular ground, and we're very confident with the Department of Capital Projects and the Friends to get a lot of these things done, where we can go out to bigger and better events at this historical venue. So I'll leave it there and ask the council if they have any questions, we'll be glad to ask.
Counselors, do you have any questions? Thank you, Counselor Clark.
I think we got a separate, some separate detail about the work plan, right? Okay? And then for the Savannah Bananas, I think they had over 9,000 people, and the parking, you know, was crazy. But they, but we didn't have the BRT in service at the time. I think there was a shuttle from Crossplex, and it would seem like with the BRT, we might actually get more parking rides.
So you're spot on, Counselor. I think it's one of those vehicles that we didn't have at that time when the Savannah Bananas came to town. Like I said, in recent conversations with the president of the Friends of Rickwood, as we go out to bigger events, we want to utilize the space that's around the Rickwood Field campus. Even if we have to have a shuttle service from the Crossplex or from Legion Field, which is right down the street, we're more than willing to work with them and, you know, help fund or help fundraise to fund that shuttle so people can get to and from the Rickwood Field for any events that they host.
Okay, well, definitely needs some work on the exterior. I don't go in it a lot, but I ride by it a lot.
So to speak on the exterior, the council did approve around, I want to say, $750,000 a couple, I want to say, a year ago, when we did the bond financing. So we had a structural analysis done on that facility, and we're actually at the point now where BATE has come in to make those necessary adjustments to the structure of Rickwood Field.
Any other questions, Counselor Abbott?
Actually, I don't have a question, but I just want to say thank you. Maybe there's a reason that I ran one more time, was so I could hear somebody say that we're going to maintain something we own. It's pretty, it's pretty amazing. I could quote my colleague about we do a lot of things, but we don't do any of them well, but I love that comment. But now, but now I have faith that we're going to, we're going to take care of our stuff. Now you need to get over to the Botanical Gardens before it falls down.
We are aware, yes, ma'am.
And that train may be going already. All right, thank you. Any other ones on this one? Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Madam President. Second item is Legion Field Improvement. Right now, we want to invest a minimum right now of $4 million into Legion Field to do some necessary work within that field and that complex. One of the largest tickets on this breakdown is a renovation of a lot of the restrooms, and some masonry, and repair and paint to Legion Field. As you see, we have a breakdown, and I will note that this is just on the minimum side. We will probably have to consider some other long-term solutions for Legion Field. But I just want to note some of the other improvements that we had and that the council approved, especially with the LED lighting that was installed on Legion Field, and a lot of the work that we did to the seating in some instances of Legion Field. So if you just noted, note the list, that comes up to a solid $4 million, where we just want to make these solid improvements to Legion Field as we continue to host events and recruit events, especially as we have the Magic City Classic for the next four years.
Any questions on this one? Counselor Clark?
I feel like I'm taking up a lot of time today, but, you know, being the city council person who chairs the Parks and Rec and Cultural Arts Committee, you know, I do feel like, you know, y'all might be, y'all might have some kind of strategic direction with that facility that I'm not aware of. And maybe you don't, but if you don't, we, I think we definitely need to, you know, the park board and the administration, and maybe the Parks and Rec and Cultural Arts Committee, we need to huddle and just, you know, what are we doing? I know we have to keep it safe for the public to enter, but, you know, what's that? What, to what level do you invest, and are there benchmarks? Like, if we can get these events, then we'll do X, you know? Because, you know, as much as I really hate to say this out of my mouth, I think there, you know, we have another stadium. And so what do we think we can do there, and how much do we need to invest to be sure we can do it there? I think it's kind of where I'm going. And if y'all have some thoughts, because y'all have probably been thinking about it a much longer time than I have. So I think we just need to get together so we can all know what the thinking is.
That's very duly noted, Counselor. I think there's a lot of things that, not to say that we're working in a silo when it comes to Legion Field, but we are in constant conversation with a lot of outside entities that are very interested in Legion Field. And not to try and ruin it, we just don't want to speak loudly on it, because we don't want to just, you know, let them know that we're kind of getting ahead of the game and just already, you know, kind of crossing the goal line without the football in our hand. So I just want to just note that we'll constantly try to be in communications of what we can say and what we can do to the council, so we do owe you that, I agree.
Any other questions regarding this particular item? All right, thank you, next one?
All right, thank you. The next one is the Birmingham Family Fund Center that the mayor has noted to this council and had a large support from the community of the western side of Birmingham. So I'll actually just bring up Mr. Cornell Wesley, who leads our IEO department to give an overview of what we're trying to do in the Crossplex Village. Mr. Wesley.
Mr. Wesley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Ms. Cornell Wesley now serves as the Director for the Office of Innovation and Economic Opportunity. Again, excitingly, we are, I get to stand before you to present the mayor's vision and the community's support for the Birmingham Family Fund Center. We are currently in the pre-development phase of which we have entertained, well, rather, the agreement is currently legal, being vetted, in which we will undertake approximately 24 items in preparedness for the implementation of the Family Fund Center. The, the really cool thing about the amenities that it will afford, as mentioned, the community wanted to see bowling. We will have bowling. The community wanted to see a skating rink. It will have a skating rink. The esports facility is probably the fastest growing aspect in terms of entertainment and, and gaming. It will house esports styled facility, a food hall, approximately 4,000 square feet of it, event space for the community, table game area, bounce zone, and of course, four sensory rooms for our special needs kids. This pre-development phase will last approximately three to six months. We are hopeful to be able to wrap this up prior to the end of the fiscal year and then be able to present full implementation to you there shortly thereafter.
Any questions, councilors? Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if you could repeat the list of amenities that we'll have? I got the skating rink and a bounce room?
Yes, so it will have a bowling alley. It will have a roller skating rink. It will have the esports slash senior net, which will be housed on the second floor. So we'll have a space dedicated for our seniors as well, a food hall. It will have a board game area on its first floor, event space that can be used for a myriad of different reasons, table games, bounce zone, a video land area. Outdoor, it will have pickleball. And then, of course, at every corner of the facility, four sensory rooms. We, again, by the design, really want to be inclusive.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilor Clark?
Thank you. Mr. Wesley, do we have a design consultant retained to work with us on this already?
So the design won't be finalized, but we are working on how this would look with these different amenities. So we have some initial concepts and that's what we are hoping to accomplish in this pre-development phase.
But I'm saying, we have a design firm under contract?
Yes, so there's several, under, well, I can't say under contract because the contract hasn't been signed. So we're going through the process currently.
Okay.
The question is, go ahead and ask.
All right, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
First of all, while we're on this line of topic, when did we vote on that design firm?
So...
You're talking about the design for the team that's doing the project?
Pre-development?
Or, say again what you were calling this?
I was just saying, have we contracted? Do we have a consultant under contract who's assisting us?
No, not a specific consultant. Again, under the Project Development Services, there are elements around architectural design and site demolition and site survey, but a specific consultant or rather firm that is designing it? No.
Okay, so we don't have an architect?
No, ma'am.
We've not had, or engineers?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
The group, who was the member of the group that were, the package that we received?
The rental property group. They are the consultant we've engaged for pre-development.
But they're not under contract?
The, the agreement has to be signed. It is currently illegal.
Okay. But they already started the work?
No.
Um, okay, so they, well, we were provided information from them, so?
You were provided a proposed summary of what would be inclusive?
A proposal?
It's a proposal for the council. So it's like, like Mr. Wesley said, it's no contract. It's currently an OCA, but we're currently acting off of this proposal for them to move forward with more and more of the development of the Family Fund Center.
Okay. So, and what, just to clarify, what's a table game?
Table games like billiard or?
Ping pong.
Ice hockey or?
So like gambling or ping pong?
No, like ping pong, pool.
Okay.
Billiards.
Checkers.
All right. Um, so I guess my question is this. Why, so what I, what I understand the vision of the Crossplex being is something that brings in outside opportunity to, to boost up Five Points West. So there's, there's the sporting aspect. So we were able to host Alabama High School Athletics there. We're able to host so many events. We were able to host the World Games there. We're able to host a laundry list of events there. And it's, and it's Class A facilities and it's something that, that, that really draws people to that area. And then it gives the ability for that hotel to be in existence and it gives the ability for shops in that area to, to be there and all that kind of stuff. So why are we, instead of doing something like, you know, a group of, a ton of athletic fields that would bring in a certain sport or something like that, why are we doing something that specifically ping pong, skating rink and bowling alley?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam President. So, Councilor, the mayor's vision is that it's more family centric. So for the folks who come out to the Crossplex, what activities will they have to do while they're there? So it's a combination of both. You'll be receiving plans in the future to really support some of the things that you've said in other spaces in the city where there are other opportunities like you've described. For the Crossplex, Crossplex is, is an expansion of family centric activities for folks who've come out there.
Okay. And then my, my next question is, why did we not, if this was viable to survive here, why would we not RFP this out to somebody that does a bowling alley, that does a skating rink, that does all these different whatever?
So that opportunity has not passed yet and that's what Mr. Wesley can speak to.
So a part of the pre-development is to prove all of the concepts as mentioned. If in this discovery phase is determined that these feasibilities and these elements don't work, then that, that information will be presented and a recommendation will, will obviously follow.
So, Councilor, I think, I think I follow your, your questioning. I think what we're trying to do is build a facility where it would not be a department of the city. We will have some type of RFP that will go out for somebody to actually manage and promote this facility. It will be an anchor within the Crossplex Village where we hope that will spur more development around it.
So what happens if we don't get anybody that wants to run this bowling alley? Are we going to have city employees now running a bowling alley? And then what happens? Is it closed?
I'll let Mr. Wesley speak to it, but the goal is we wouldn't even get to that point because a part of the RFP phase is to identify someone who would run it.
The RFP phase would happen prior to us building it?
Oh, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay. I guess I'm confused while we're allocating the money then, because typically we approve an RFP, it goes out, then we talk about, so?
Yeah, Council, I think it's more of just having more skin in the game, like we tell you with the, with the pallet program. Of course, we, we purchased the pallets before we put a RFP, but we wanted to show that we have our funds on the table, just as we have our funds on the table to build this facility for somebody to come in, answer the RFP and manage the facility.
Some of this is concept too, Councilor. So it's alignment between the mayor and the council that this is a part of the development for the space. So what the mayor wanted to, the council to hear is these are the recommended plans for the space and if there's alignment, then we move to the next phase.
That's correct.
All right.
Any other questions? I did just want to ask one question about the summary that's included in the report we had.
Yes, ma'am.
Towards the bottom of the page on page two, just what we are sort of visualizing or what we're saying, we're imagining that this could be. You've listed, or this particular group has listed estimated cost between 12 and 16 million, but we're only going for 15 million. Any reason we just think that's going to fall within that ballpark?
Yeah, so the 15 kind of is split into two, so the, that really kind of determines finishings, right? So your finishings can really increase your budget exponentially. So I felt that that would be a safe estimate.
Okay. And it's just the timing of this. This shows that this was around December, but now we know we have this surplus. So is there opportunity there? If, let's say, the way we're imagining it?
Yes, ma'am.
We're reimagining the Crossplex. And one of these RFPs comes back and it's higher than what we thought would be the total price of this package. Do we have some opportunity there to make any differences? Does my question make sense?
I think she's talking about the construction phase of it. Yeah, once we put out the actual construction document, be it for the proposal, then we get a total idea of how much it's actually going to cost. Some of it, our hope is that this is enough money. I think, I think Mr. Wes is very confident this is, this will be enough money to get a fully furnished building where we have a turnkey type of developments for somebody to come in and go straight into operations.
Okay. Any other questions, Councilor Clark?
Yes. How much will it cost to retain this firm to be our developer partner to, you know, create this project for us?
To, to?
I, I guess we're going to hire RPG to be our partner to help us do this and the contract's an OCA.
So the pre-development?
How much does it cost?
So pre-development phase is what you're asking about? How much the total cost is?
Is, so their scope is going to be limited to the pre-development?
That is correct.
Okay. Yeah, so how much is that?
That is approximately 1.4 million worth of pre-development cost.
1.4 million?
Which will reduce the amount of the total build.
Okay. So what are the deliverables? Are the deliverables in here for the 1.4? I know we'll see it.
It's about 24 items that are, are going to be covered.
Okay. So we'll see that?
Yes, ma'am.
When you present it, when it's ready? Okay. All right, well.
Okay. And I just want to be sure to clarify, so in the package that we received, you have a summary that has project development services?
Development services. Those are about 24 items.
So that includes those pre-development plans?
Yes, ma'am.
And they're listed here under those services? Is that the scope?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
I, I guess what, what we're doing is setting up the money and if, if we don't spend it, I mean, it didn't make us have to spend it to set, to allocate it.
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes, yes, Council. We, we can't move forward on a proposal if we don't have the funding in place.
Okay.
Anything else, Councilor Woods? Just talking to my, okay. I do want to say on behalf of the residents and the area that this is going to, I do want to thank Mayor Whiffon. I know, and Councilor Clark may have been a part of some of these conversations and maybe even Councilor Tate, just in this general area where Five Points West sits and where the Crossplex sits, there were many requests from residents to make something family centered. And so it may not be in the scope of what we may think is entertainment, but these items, I think, fall well into what most of those residents were hoping you could bring to that area. Maybe not all inclusive, but I do know they had asked, um?
Yes, ma'am.
Had conversations where people were looking at things of this magnitude, again, to make it more family.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, hi, Mr. Wesley.
How are you, Councilor?
And I concur with Madam President, what she said. It is an appetite for something like this for Birmingham because when you think about skating, it's a big coach skating culture back now. So we have to go to 280, we have to go to Fort Lauderdale, we have to go on the outskirts, you know, to go skating. And, you know, I cannot stress enough the importance of listening to people that live in community. Because a lot of times what, what I see and what people tend to see is decision makers making those decisions for them.
Yes, ma'am.
Saying that this is what we see and what we want instead of incorporating and making decisions with community. Because at the end of the day, people live in these communities.
Yes, ma'am.
And so they've suffered long enough. And so if we're talking about moving, you know, any type of thing, you, you, when you see gun violence erupting all across, all, all across the nation, and when we think about and reimagine what does it look like to, you know, engage people in, in a cultural mindset? So these things have been stripped out of community, right? And so, you know, I can think about me growing up and we want to incorporate these things back into the community. And so I look at this as a, as an opportunity to move, you know, those in community to start doing something different.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Tate. Any other questions or comments regarding this particular item? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wesley. I believe now we have the amphitheater?
Yes, yes, Madam President. So I'll bring up Mr. Tav Snyder, who is the Executive Director for the BJCC, that can speak on the amphitheater project that we're in support of.
Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
I'll just kind of go over the same information I was, you know, shared with most of you. Hope you're able to receive, receive it and, and give it a quick look before today. This is about the proposed amphitheater project as a part, part of the star uptown redevelopment of the former Caraway Hospital campus and the BJCC's involvement in that. This is a very unique project for the BJCC to be involved in because rarely would we be this committed in something that we're not going to operate or manage ourselves. This is a, a unique situation, but we feel like the vision for this type of venue to be part of that redevelopment is catalytic. We think it's great for North Birmingham, the city as a whole, especially the area around the BJCC and solidifying it as a entertainment and, you know, convention and sports hub regionally. We think it's a great project for the future of the BJCC and, and our lockstep success with the city. Project envisions an 8,500 to 9,000 seat amphitheater as a part of that project. The primary debt service for the project for the part that will be financed and principally why the BJCC is involved is some reallocation of lodging taxes that come off the Sheridan Birmingham and Western Birmingham Hotel is the primary source of the debt service for the finance portion, as well as some of the, what we call pilot revenues or transactional taxes off the operation of the amphitheater. That allows us to finance around $30 million, the total project cost. And then among the four primary partners, the BJCC, the management partner, working with the city of Birmingham and Jefferson County, to buy down that finance portion to allow those tax revenues to cover the finance portion of $5 million by each entity. Puts the civic center authority in the ownership role primarily to be able to capture those taxes, but the management partner would operate, manage and book the facility. And primarily, what you see outlined in the following pages, you'll speak to a little bit of funding and the milestones that have, have been achieved back in October, which kind of brought this project to, to, to life, was movement on the Convention and Bureau, Convention and Visitors Bureau reallocation piece. That was kind of the go no-go moment of this. If that didn't work, we didn't have a debt service formula or a formula to issue the debt for the project. Getting over that hurdle was a big piece to allow the work to put the rest of the pieces together. And I'll just say, all these agreements or, you know, the partnerships involved all have language and contingencies that all of these have to be successful for any of them to go into effect. So the Convention Bureau reallocation piece doesn't go into effect unless project financing is actually executed. The two funding agreements with the county and the city that are proposed would not go into effect unless the entire piece comes together. We have to work through negotiating with Corporate Realty as the developer of Star Uptown, some pieces there around purchasing the property and some other parts to make the amphitheater a piece of that overall redevelopment. And we have to finalize the management agreement with that operating partner. So there are still pieces to go, but we're taking it kind of one step at a time and this is the phase we're at and, you know, working with the mayor and his team and, you know, speaking with the council. This is kind of the phase we're at and I'm here to answer any questions you've got.
Thank you, Mrs. Snyder. Any questions, councilors? Councilor Abbott?
Of course. Thank you for being here.
Yes, ma'am.
The Convention and Visitors Bureau agreed to give up, I suppose, their portion of the tax.
of the taxes, the lodging taxes from the Sheridan and the Weston, to help make this happen. The State Department of Tourism is giving them $1 million a year for three years, is that correct, to make up for the fact that they're giving up part of the lodging taxes? Is that accurate?
That's accurate. I would say, yeah, that $1 million a year for three years goes towards replacing what that commitment would be over the term of the debt. It's not going to replenish them dollar for dollar, but it is something.
Yeah, well, that was what I was curious about. It's for three years. What happens at the end of three years? They have to let some people go, or?
No, ma'am. The, what is being redirected in terms of what it can do in, again, growing room use usage in the city? I mean, if you look at the trajectory of what the CBB's budget's been, which is based on lodging taxes, been, you know, doing this, thankfully, which is wonderful news. So in reviewing it in terms of the benefit to the city, what it can do for the growth around the BJCC and put people in hotels downtown and encourage additional downtown hotel growth, everyone feels like it's a good investment.
Okay. Well, I was just thinking that $1 million a year is pretty significant, and at the end of three years, you suddenly have $1 million less. And I just wondered if there was a plan for the time after the three years, or do we think that everything will have improved so much in Birmingham that that million will be made up by all the people coming to the amphitheater and staying in our hotels? Is that the thought process?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And I think Councilor Williams may want to speak to that, since he was involved in the conversations as part of that board. So is, would that be fair to, or would you like me to? I just saw him raising his hand.
He's sitting on that board. Did you want to share that information?
Sure. Is that, is that okay with you?
It's okay with me, so that we can be sure to get an answer.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I think the thought process is, is that there was going to be a three-year gap where building this amphitheater would allow for additional hotels to be built, one of which possibly could be built at the Star Uptown. And with the addition of those three hotels that would be built, that would more than cover the deficit or delta that you're referring to. And then in good faith, some of our, the state of Alabama said, you know, in that three-year period, while the additional room nights were not there, will cover you to, for that delta. So this amphitheater is expected to bring in a great number of people for room nights. And so there's a, I think that there's a path for them to make a good amount of additional revenue with that, obviously during the construction phase of the three-year delta gap. But in essence, that was the thought process between that, not that there would, not that anyone wouldn't be made whole in the long run.
Okay, thank you. That answers my question.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions, Mr. Snyder? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yes, Madam President. So those conclude the two resolutions of intent. I know that the mayor has had other conversations with the councilman about providing more items to this committee and to this committee as a whole, where we want to use another part of the portion of the surplus to kind of continue the need of taking care of our facilities. Madam President, if you want me to, I can go down the list, and how would you like to proceed?
I would like for you, and I'd also like for you to just explain so that the public understands what those categories are and how this will impact each of our districts and the infrastructure within the 99 neighborhoods.
Yes, ma'am.
So how this affects us.
Be glad to. So just top of line, as noted, we have an $81 million surplus. What's before the council right now is a use of almost $60 million of that 81 that we want to put back into the community, into our facilities. The first one outside of what was discussed between the resolution of intent for employees and for our cultural amenities will be our parking rig. Right now, we have a list before the council of 23 parks and neighborhoods and communities and pools that we want to invest 4.4 million dollars. I'll go down the list for public consumption. Right now, we would like to suggest, right now, let's see, the East Pinson Valley Recreation Center has some foundation issues and some flooding that we'd like to alleviate. Grayson Park, we would like to purchase a new motor and a filtration system. Hawkins Recreation Center has a retaining wall that needs to be repaired. Roughenapart Trail Expansion is to complete a trail expansion for the park within the park. Caldwell Park has a drainage issue that we're dealing with a flooding issue within that community that's really hurting the park, the, what is it, Councilor, the park?
The Virginia Sanford Theater and the Episcopal Place.
Episcopal Place, yes, thank you. Macklin Park, same, we want to put some money into pool repairs. Eastlake Park, we just want to put some money into, give it a little love and do some repairs and upgrades. Engle Nook Park, we would like to purchase some playground equipment for the community. MLK Recreation Center, just replace some doors flooding and repair the leaks and install in the pool. The Fitness Center North, we need to replace the roof, which is leaking. Harrison Park, refinish the gym doors and resurface the outdoor courts. Memorial Park, replace some entryway doors and repaint the building. Roosevelt Park, replace equipment doors and the fence around the pool deck. Wiggins Park, replace the HVAC in the gym and replace some entryway doors and repair the water fountains at the, at the pool. Osmo Valley Community Center, we want to repair the foundation that is, I think it's really cracking from a flooding incident that we had that we just want to repair. Central Park Recreation Center, repair doors, windows, repaint the building. McHome Park, replace the piping to try and reopen the pool. Hoopa City Recreation Center, replace the HVAC in the gym. House Sanford, replace, repair the pavilion and the foundation. Enslie Park, replace the flooring in the recreation center. North Birmingham Recreation Center, repair the roof and the gym floor. McAlpine Recreation Center, replace the doors and the entryway tiles and update the restrooms. And the last one is One Pratt Park, because this is one of those different type of parks, we kind of want to enter into a maintenance agreement for the maintenance of that particular part, because that one is one of those parts that cannot be really maintained by public workers. So all that totals to 4.4 million when it comes to our park and recreational needs. And I would like to note that this list was not produced by the mayor's office. This was in conjunction with the park leadership, park board leadership, Ms. Renee Benesey.
Thank you. Any questions on these items? Councilor Clark?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Just wanted to ask about Fitness Center North and the 350,000 that's allocated. Will all of that have to be spent on the roof, or can some be spent on new equipment? Because none of the treadmills work, and they just, it's just old stuff.
So I would just, so this is a high-cost estimate that we got from capital projects. So based off what the bids come back, if it's less than the 350, we're more than willing to put that money back into equipment. I don't see no issue in that.
Okay, so make a note, just so it won't go to another project, because I think you could do a lot.
And just a note, for it to go to another project, the council have to approve that.
Okay. Thank you. So speaking of high estimates, I think some of these estimates are old, and you know what happens when you work off a pre-COVID estimate. Like, the Mac Mahon Pool, I've been hearing that number for a long time, so I don't trust that number, because COVID happened and inflation happened. And, I mean, how recent are, I mean, and I know we don't have estimating capacity at the parks we have to rely on.
Okay, so for this particular pool, we already had money set aside for the pool. So this is in addition to the money that we already have allocated for it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, councilors? Councilor Clark, go ahead.
One more. On the maintenance agreement, so most of these are one-time capital expenses. I think the maintenance would be an annual.
Yes, that will actually be an annual. I think this is just really just startup money for us right now to keep it going. Once we find a value business in the RFP process, we'll just put this money within the Park and Recreation Board to continue the ongoing maintenance of the agreement.
Do you think this will cover one year or multiple years?
And speaking with DPW, we're confident, and I don't know if Mr. Yates, oh, Yates, do you want, you want to speak on that, because I think this was multi-year, but I could be wrong. If you would like to correct me, I don't mind being wrong. This is One Pratt Park maintenance. $100,000. $100,000. Okay.
That's one year?
What was that answer, Mr. Yates?
That's, that's multi-year.
Multi-year?
Yes.
Okay. Like, three? Four?
Three.
Three. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, I said, councilor? Any other questions on this one? Thank you very much. So I'm looking at, it looks like 23 parks and about $4 million that's being put to that.
Yes, ma'am. 23 parks, including parks, recreation center, and pools.
Perfect.
In a tune of 4.4 million dollars. Madam President, the next one we'd like to discuss and let the public know is that we want to invest 3.4 million dollars into our libraries. The list that we have before the council, I would say, it's a little all over the place, but this was just in consultation with the park, I mean, not the park, with the library board leadership. The first thing, and a couple of things we want to do are within the central library. Right now, we want to fix the HVAC unit, the skylight in the central library, the carpet insulation within the same central library, and the voiceover IP within the central library. And the last thing is a central system that helps monitor the camera, there's a camera system within that central library location also. The next one is Eastlake Library, where we want to replace the cooling tower. As you know, that library is currently closed. So with the funding that we have before the council, we feel like if we are awarded this, we can get that Eastlake Library back open. The next one is North Avondale, has a foundation issue. We would like to put the money towards that. Also, Tittysville Library has the same, a foundation issue that we would like to alleviate also. Palletly Library is the installation of a STEM lab with upgrades. Smithfield Library has a window issue that we're trying to alleviate, because it's causing a lot of leaks within the library. And the last one is Enslie, which is closed, and we feel like the funds that we can put towards this will help alleviate this water damage, and they can reopen.
All right, thank you. Councilors, any questions about the list and the changes proposed regarding the libraries? Councilor Clark, go ahead.
I'm learning. So do we, like, when we have storm damage to a library, like, in the case of Enslie, where a lot of the material and contents get water damaged, do we get to claim, make insurance claims, or are we self-insured for a property and casualty, or?
So the city is self-insured, but I'm not sure what type of insurance that the library board has. So we can send that question to Ms. Langston.
I was, I mean, I was just wondering.
It's a great question. I'm not 100% sure, but I would love, I would definitely entertain it.
You can let me know another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Councilor Moore.
Yeah, I could be missing it. Was there any mention made to, I guess, the freight elevator? Was that still an issue?
We already have funding, it's my, central library. Yes, we have, we have funding that's already established for the, for the elevator.
Okay.
Anything else, councilors? All right, Chief?
Yes. The next one on the list is, is pretty self-explanatory, is that we need additional funding for weed abatement. Just to give you context on why we need additional funding is, this year, we were more aggressive with doing more cutting within the colder months to try and catch up on the weed bill. Kind of in the past, we kind of took a lot of the contractors and told them, kind of just hold off until we get into weed-growing season. But because we were so aggressive during the non-growing months, we wanted to just put more money into it, so we won't run out by the end of the year. That's it.
Pretty clear on that, we need this. Any questions about the weed abatement?
Come to you.
Yes, Councilor.
And this might be our subject. I know we had approved for the goats, the mechanical goats. Would those also be in utilization? Like, when would those come into play?
Glad Mr. Yates is still here. So that was initially a pilot program that we were going to do outside at Lynn Park. If Mr. Yates want to update the council how the goat program is going or started, or whatever you want to do.
Josh Yates, I serve as the Director of Department of Public Works. And to answer your question, the goats are out in Lynn Park right now. They are up and running. We are testing it. We really want to see how it works. The vendor was looking a little bit at other locations, but I really wanted to make sure it works before we look to expand that further, because we do have to spend staff time fixing, repairing, sharpening the blades, those type of things on the robots. So we want to make sure that it does suit our needs before we expand it further.
How often do they go out? Like, how often are they, I guess, out in the park?
Out in this park, there's four pins, is what they call it. It's basically a wire underground. The robots work all the way to the wire. They run for several hours and then go back to their charging station and then continue to run, just like a Roomba. But they run every day. They sometimes have to be swapped between pins if we have an issue with one of the robots, or if we're only running two robots, we may have to move them from pin to pin. But right now, we have four out there in Lynn Park, so each one of the pins is cutting for several hours and then charging. And a lot of that right now, I think we have set on night. So a lot of them are running at night. You're not actually seeing them during the day. They're, they're kind of going back to their charging station.
Probably why I didn't know they were running. All right, Tom. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. And I just have a question about the project itself, just real quick. We allocated that money, I'm just trying to get an idea, how the system works. You know how you have more growth during the spring and summer season? I was just wondering, when we put that in, have we gone through like a full season to know how they will be able to accommodate, or how they'll be able to cut what our growth would be?
We have not been able to do that yet. We just got them in the park in late November, early December. So we're just now studying them. The landscape and topography, any types of dip in the ground and all, we have to repair all those to make sure they have a good, smooth surface. So we're continuing to work out the bugs with that, to kind of see how it is. And we also will get an update from the vendor to see how much downtime versus how much actual cutting time that they're doing. So we can evaluate it and make decisions on, you know, as we get into the next months ahead, the growing season and all, really be able to see how it works.
Thank you. Any other questions from the CA's about that? Thank you, sir.
Yes, ma'am. The next one is just, we need additional funding for our citywide sidewalk projects. This is just additional funding that we want to leverage and have more sidewalk projects completed and use it mostly for grant funding that Mr. Fowler can leverage without.
I did have a question about this one. So this is more putting, you know how we did allocate money for grants, and then it was more of a project to determine what shape we're in for sidewalks, correct? Or this would actually be money that would be used?
Just go towards actual projects. I think you were talking about the street resurfacing program that we're trying to implement, that the council graciously gave us a half a million dollars to implement, so we can better study wet streets. We need to accommodate based on priority and need and kind of develop a deferred maintenance when it comes to how we treat our roads.
Thank you. All right.
And I do want to also, because I heard you in utilities, utilities meeting yesterday, that we really need to look into strengthening and helping our code enforcement when the utility comes to do their, their cuts within the streets. We heard you, and I did let the team know that we need to try and work on that, because I think the, I think it's called Article H. I may be wrong on that one. But if they make a cut, they actually are supposed to pave the entire road, yes. So I think we just need to sit down and work on strengthening that.
Thank, I do thank you for making note of that, because that is one of the constant complaints that we get from residents, not only just from utilities' standpoint, but each of us district-wide, as far as when we go in and we make those adjustments or we pave our streets, and then those utility cuts have to come in, how to put them back into the, the way they were when they first got them. And we've spent some money on streets. I'm just thinking, if Jefferson Avenue, if they come down there and cut up that street, we're going to have a really hard time. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Abbott.
You know, that is an issue, a really big issue, because one of the streets that I had paved in the last tranche of paving has been destroyed by plumbing companies, some utilities. I mean, it's just as bad as it was before it was paved, because it's been cut over and over and over. And these plumbing companies are the worst. They come and they dig all the way across the street, they just throw something in a hole and drive off, and no one... They come and they dig all the way across the street, they just throw something in the hole and drive off, and no one pursues them. You know, the homeowner sometimes won't even admit that they did something, even though it leads to their house. But the city does not seem to be able to make anyone do anything. And it's just very frustrating, you know, when you finally get a street paved and everybody's all happy for about two months, until the first guy comes in and cuts a big hole in it. My impression is that they don't even bother to ask the city if it's okay. They just bring their bulldozer over, their backhoe, or whatever they use, and just do whatever they want. It's just so frustrating. And I know all of us have it happen to us, because, but, but, you know, you get a newly paved street and you expect it to last for, oh, I don't know, five years, and it lasts two months. And it just makes you want to explode, and if you turn it into 3-1-1, nobody does anything until they've already escaped. You know, I mean, obviously, there are not enough people to go out and catch them when they're actually in the act. But we could use a video, right? We could make videos of them doing the evil deed, and then somebody would go and catch them later. There's no law department here to ask. Okay, thank you, Madam President.
But no, so I do want to piggyback, though, what you're telling us is that you are going to put some teeth into that code enforcement or get more code enforcers out there, or 3-1-1 will do something? Yes. Hold on, I think, Councilor Williams, you could- Go ahead, Councilor Clark.
Yeah, to, to the point about, that Ms. Abbott brought up about, I guess, I'm just a little unclear operationally where that even sits, because, you know, the city engineer used to have, I don't know, they were like right-of-way agents, but they were also-
Green codes, it was the green codes.
They were also, there was a bunch of engineers down there who would do a lot of utility coordination, and so I don't know if those folks are in B dot now.
They reside in B dot, yes.
So what does the city engineer do now? I mean, because they're, they're not in subdivision cases?
I mean, I know we're getting a little bit off-
Go ahead. What were you going to say?
Can we, we're going to get an org chart, aren't we?
Yes, I can give you, I mean, that was a broad question, but I, I know you want to know what the city engineer does, but-
He resides in capital projects now, so in terms of the separation of duties, that's what he's saying. We probably need to provide you with an org chart and let B dot break down how the separation of duties happens since they have split.
Okay, yeah.
We'll provide that for you.
I think that would be helpful. And then when the utility companies are active, I know sometimes they, they each communicate with us differently about upcoming projects, but knowing, you know, being able to tell people when you're in the neighborhood meeting, this is who you need to call about that, you know, when they don't cover a hole properly and that sort of thing. I know, we're a little off-topic.
No, that's okay, but Chief, we would like to get that information, because I, I agree with Councilor Clark. Often, we are the ambassadors that are out there at the neighborhood meetings, and so people expect us to have that information. So I, it would be helpful to each of us, and we're able to give when it's a utilities problem. You know, we have a list of people that we go, and it's waterworks or this or whatever, that may be making those cuts. But just within the city, how we could channel that and keep that information-
Totally agree with you.
Yes, Chief?
We always do, we're always the default backups, and so when you all are finding, especially on utility companies or high-level engagement like that, and you're not getting a response, you can always send that to Chief Mitchell and I. Sometimes the accountability piece really does raise itself all the way up to the mayor, and we would need to just have visibility so we can help walk it. But we can always be your defaults. But we'll, we'll provide an org chart and then the separation of duties, so you all will see exactly how those roles are outlined.
All right, thank you. Chief?
Yes. So the last, well, the second before last is, it's a large ticket number, is that we're requesting eight million dollars in a fleet purchase. If you notice from your list that we provided, a lot of the needs are because we have such an older fleet when it comes to, when it comes PEP, DPW, Fire, and Police. So the list is really kind of to show up a lot of these divisions and departments with more up-to-date fleet. And just kind of, as noted in some of the comments, we have a dozer just as old as 2012, a roll-off that has surpassed its useful life, this has, this is a 2000 and a 2004 model, which is put in it at eighteen to twenty-two years. We want to show up the police department with more police units, a paint striping truck for B dot, a dump truck, some excavators, some F-250 that DPW would use, along with our HVAC technicians. It's just a list that, that we feel like we need to kind of show up our fleet when it comes to our needs and just the overall maintenance and the aging of our fleet.
Questions, Counselors?
And it does include some red tippers for our pilot program. Not the pilot program, but the uniform trash man program.
Councilor Abbott?
I just wanted to know, do we have a striping truck?
We have one, and it's out, it's out of commission at this moment, because of the age of it.
Okay, so that's the reason none of our newly paved streets have traffic bars or crosswalks or any kind of markings on the street to tell people when they're running through a stop sign?
Yeah, I think they ask us really just to get the better equipment to make it more efficient. I think they just go out there and almost hand-paint the lines, or they contracted out to do the lines, to do the markings. So we do have an internal team that, that can go out and stripe a street, but the equipment is the problem, what we need in order to get it done.
Okay, well, it seems to me when it's a safety issue, as in a four-way stop or something, that we should jump on the safety issues, even if we don't jump on anything else.
Especially when you made that note about that, that particular intersection that you said, you say you was out there watching people run the stop sign. I think that may have been completed, because we did lift that up to B dot, and it was a priority when we, when you made that note.
I don't think so.
We'll follow up with that.
But the intersection also floods, and so it may be that it was underwater when they went to do the work and they couldn't put the stripes down.
Let me investigate, and I'll definitely email you and give you an update on that.
Yeah, because I watched them running it last night, too. I mean, it just, I walk that way, so I just, I just see it.
Yes, ma'am. Let, let us follow up, and then I'll give you an update.
So then, if I could ask a question just to follow up on that, the paint stripping transportation, that, is that four hundred thousand?
Yes.
Is that then would be buying that particular piece of equipment?
Yes, we would purchase that. None of this is leasing. This is outright purchase.
And I do just have a question about our overall fleet maintenance, or how we, do we have retention plans when we have equipment? Or, you know, how do we get ourselves in this point? Do we not know that we have equipment already that's ten years old or close to its lifetime, life cycle?
Yeah, it's, I'm sorry, Madam President, but it is a retention plan, but it's really based off of what funding is available. Councilor Abbott knows this, because she's been here just as long as I have. Under Larry Lanford, you know, we did a very big lease, a purchase of fleet, which pretty much took care of the entire city. But we never did that again for, until we did the leasing program that was approved by the council two years ago. And just the, the minimum that we put in just fleet retention at a million, at four million dollars a year, just so we can keep a healthy rotation of, you know, equipment.
Yes, Chief?
Also, Madam President, in addition to what Chief Mitchell said, we've also tried to move to not purchasing fleet at one time, because when it fails at one time-
And then it all ages at the same time.
Right, so it's to stagger the purchase of fleet, so we're not stuck in a situation where everything needs to be replaced at the same time.
Totally agree.
Question? Do you have something? Councilor Clark?
So I remember we just approved a grant application for a recycling truck for the A.D.M. grant. Like, that was one truck. How many trucks should we have, maybe? Or are there other trucks in that other grant? You know, because we had the four million and the two million.
Yeah, it was three, three grants, but I let Mr. Yates speak on-
I'm just wondering-
No, who we awarded the grant, what we would potentially get out of the grant, especially with the opt-in program with recycling.
Yes, ma'am. Josh Yates, again, I just, just wanted to say that the grants that we applied for, there were three of them. One was for four million, one was for two, the other one for around three hundred-
Yeah.
And some change. And the trucks are a part of that. What we looked at when we were applying for the grant and speaking with the grants team was, we didn't want to just invest in trucks or just invest in carts. We had to invest in all our infrastructure. Where we may not be able to get everything we need, we'll be able to provide the service that we, we can provide. So the trucks don't work without, the carts, the carts don't work without the trucks. There's, there's a whole process there. So in regard to the trucks, yes, they're close to two hundred and fifty, two hundred and eighty thousand dollars per truck. And to, you know, as we move, right now, we're using waste trucks to pick up our recycling. And with the grant, if that were to come online, we could use those trucks, single some out just for recycling, you know, or use some as combo, really. We're, we're still building that system if we get that grant backup plan. And still, we're moving forward with the routeware system and looking at the opt-in, opt-out program. We're moving forward with that, with or without the grant, and if we get the grant, we'll be able to build our infrastructure at a much more rapid pace.
Okay, so we don't, if we don't get these grants for some reason, we, we just have to keep picking up recycling with the garbage trucks?
We'll, we'll come before the council in the next budget cycle requesting recycled trucks.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? Right, thank you, Chief.
Okay, the last one, Madam President and Counselors, is just some additional funding that Officer of the City Attorney needs for legal claims. Can't go too in-depth, because I know we have to go into executive session, but just high-level view, she's trending towards a deficit in just that account, just based off of many of the claims that we've paid out throughout this, this half of the year. So I don't know, Madam President, once this, this item comes back before the council, you can call for an executive session. We can, we can talk further about it. That was it.
I apologize. What was your last statement?
No, I was just saying, once this item comes back before the council, we'll, we'll feel free to have an executive session to talk about this.
All right. Thank you very much.
Because it's concerning pending litigation.
Correct, correct. And we did have some action within the last two or three months where we did give more monies for that.
Yeah, it was around a year and a half ago where we asked the council to use of the Birmingham fund for some, some pending litigation that we had a large payout that we had to pay.
Any other questions about this one in particular?
Well, Madam President, thank you again. This kind of concludes all our surplus expenditures. Like I said, of the, the eighty-one million dollars that we have in our FY 2021 audit, we're looking to spend six point four million of that to invest back into our employees and our community. So I thank you for the consideration of the item, and we'll always have our doors and emails open if you have any more questions before this appears before the city council for consideration.
Very much. Counselors, I want to thank the mayor and his team, and of course, we've already talked about our finance, finance department and the auditing that took place to give us these numbers. And so I do want to thank those department heads when we talk about parking wreck, libraries, and each of the entities that have helped to come up with this, and thank you, Counselors, for having that opportunity to share that information. This is actually for information only at this time. I don't believe we need to make any type of, I know we had this document that was in the packet, so I just have to ask if we need to make any type of vote to move this out of Committee of the Hole, just so that it, we know that we had approval from Committee of the Hole to bring this forward, for consideration for the full council. So could I entertain a motion for that in a second? Is that required? I'm looking at everybody to see if that's actually the needed, because you're just going to propose it for us, right?
Because we didn't present an actual ordinance before this, this council, and we would just submit a ordinance that breaks down each item. I know that Pro Tem Smithman said that she wanted them separated, so I'm, I'm assuming that's the will of the council, that we can just put an ordinance. I hate to do it for each one, but, I mean, it's the pleasure of the council.
Well, considering the nature of it, I'm in agreement with Pro Tem. It's not a problem with separating it and doing-
Yeah, understood.
All right, well, thank you. Thank you again to mayor and to administration for bringing this information forward. Counselors, we do have one other item that's on our agenda, and this is a presentation from A.D.O.C., the Alabama Department of Corrections. Jeffrey Williams, Deputy Commissioner of Government Relations for the Alabama Department of Corrections. We did receive about a ninety-eight-page document that was emailed out with some of this information, but if we could get them to come forward, and I believe you have some other people that are reviewing it. Chief, I'm going to let you-
Yeah, I just want to bring up Chief Melissa Smiley, that will give the opening remarks before he brings up this. Thank you.
Good evening, Counselors.
Good evening, Attorney Smiley.
Thank you so much. So the item that you're considering at this time is an innovative and collaborative effort that we're asking this council to support. The goal is to invest in an otherwise potentially idle segment of our population. We have named this effort the Path Forward Project, and it is a pilot to invest in incarcerated women that are in a work release facility that is in a very short distance from here. So we have here today representatives from the Alabama Department of Corrections, and I would like for them to come forward and talk to you about the opportunity.
Thank you. Could you just give us your name and your title, and so that we can, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening, Madam President, members of the council. My name is Jeff Williams. I'm a deputy commissioner with the Alabama Department of Corrections. I work out of office in Montgomery. Part of my duties consist of governmental relations, but it also consists of inmate rehabilitation. I have with me, this is Warden Lucky. She is the newly-installed warden of seven months of the Birmingham Women's Facility. I feel a need to apologize for Warden Lucky. She is struggling through some allergies right now, so she's a bit not as comfortable as she, she tends to be typically. We're, we're really excited about this opportunity to partner with the city of Birmingham. As I mentioned, in the field of rehabilitation, we have a goal in the Department of Corrections to provide rehabilitation and reentry to every offender that comes through the system. What you have here in Birmingham is a work release facility, and these women are in what we consider to be the final stage of their transition through the Department of Corrections. So as such, we have a heightened focus on their rehabilitation and reentry. Mentioned earlier, the facility, facility houses about two hundred and thirty women. This is an opportunity that we're completely excited about, because without partners in the community, we don't typically have opportunities where offenders can get real-life job-training experiences while they're, while they're still incarcerated. Obviously, we can have various programs, and we do, we have vocational education programs, but here's an opportunity where women can be in a opportunity that they can take beyond their incarceration. These women are close to, many of them are close to transitioning back into the community. And as I said, this opportunity is something that they can put on a resume going forward. One of the other things that makes us particularly excited about this is there's a number of other initiatives that come with this particular opportunity. While we do partner on the men's side with some other state and county governments around the state, I think none really touch at the level that what I've been able to see with, what we can expect with, with this pilot program. So saying that, we're, we're extremely excited. I think Warden Lucky would like to maybe have a word to basically talk about the women at the facility and what she's noticed in the few months that she's been there.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
The ladies at the facility, they're very eager and they are excited for this program. They're very passionate about the things they do. Like, they're very caring to know, like, they give me thanks all the time for just doing my job. And I tell them, you don't have to thank me for doing my job, but to know that someone has their best interest at heart, they're very appreciative of it, and they, they're like very sincere about the things that you do for them. So they're very appreciative, and they are excited about this pilot program, so I'd just like to add it.
Thank you.
Yeah, we truly hope-
You know, we truly hope that this is something that can go forward, that you all can support. We pledge to be extremely good partners in the months ahead. I would also like to add and say thank you to Councilwoman Tate, who's extremely passionate about offender rehabilitation. We're supportive in working with her on those initiatives. We had the opportunity for Councilwoman Tate to come out last month and tour the facility. I think she had an opportunity to get a firsthand look at the women, talk with them directly, engage, and just kind of see what a normal day in basic activities look like. So once again, we hope that this is initiative that you all can be supportive of. Happy to take any questions or...
Counselors, do you have any questions? Yes. Go ahead, Counselor.
All right. How much will these inmates be paid and at what rate are we paying them?
Did you want to speak to that?
So, under the contract that's before you, it's an interlocal cooperation agreement. The city of Birmingham will be paying the Alabama Department of Corrections $20 per day per inmate. And we've submitted a plan which includes having them work Monday through Friday from 7:00 to 3:00. And I have you know that on the fifth day, on Friday, that day would be dedicated to training. And I can elaborate more on the training, which is based on input and feedback from the incarcerated ladies.
So we would, and what, I'm sorry, what was the number of incarcerated individuals?
Twenty, it's 25, and this is capped right now at $65,000 per year for the pilot.
Okay. So Monday through Friday, these individuals would work from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and then the city of Birmingham would pay $20 for their entire day of labor?
Yes, we're paying the Department of Corrections.
And then how much does the Department of Corrections pay the individual inmates?
The individuals in the program, there is a transportation cost that they'll cover themselves, but then the remaining portion will go to the offender.
So about how much will the inmates make per day?
I can certainly get some figures in and get back to you specifically.
I mean, I guess the exact amount isn't that important because if they're making only $20 for an entire day of labor, I mean, and then they're charged for transportation, it couldn't be that much. All right, that's kind of troubling. But okay, how will these inmates be monitored by the city of Birmingham?
There is required training from the Alabama Department of Corrections. So city employees that will be engaged in that supervision will be trained by ADOC, specifically in their rules attached to the agreement that spell out what the requirements and regulations are for that supervision.
And where will these employee, excuse me, where will these inmates be working with? Like, what divisions, what departments?
So the plan that's been submitted by the city includes work such, I'll give you some examples, as picking up litter, debris removal, grass cutting. If they have the required certification, it could also include HVAC work, plumbing, gardening and planting with horticulture.
Okay. So it sounds like mainly within public works?
Generally, yes.
And so the plan would be to have those public works crews monitor the individual inmates that are now part of their detail?
Can you repeat that? Repeat your question.
So the plan is to have the public works employees now monitor, supervise, whatever, whatever word you want to use, monitor, supervise the inmates?
Train city employees. When you say public works, workers, I mean, these will be people that are determined by our Director of Public Works, who are submitted for training to provide that supervision.
So will the, how about this, will the public works employees have the opportunity to opt out of this if they don't feel comfortable monitoring inmates as part of their daily, day-to-day operation?
I think there will be screening done. We do have our Director of Public Works here, and I think he would be in the best position to determine which employees would be appropriate to carry out those responsibilities.
Do you want me to repeat my question?
Yes, no, I heard. In regard to the actual supervision of the employees, we have been to a training already with the ADOC, just in preliminary review. And it would be supervisor-level employees that are already supervising employees. Our supervisors, I don't think they would be in a position to opt out if we assigned them. I guess if there was conflicts there, we could look at that and see if we need to make adjustments. Similar if we had a conflict between one of our incoming laborer employees and a supervisor. However, the work being done here will be under the supervision of them, and we'll be working in a capacity, you know, it's more so these inmates are really excited about this opportunity to be in a position to not be just held up every day. They would like to be out experiencing real-world circumstances. So yes, there's a level of supervision there. There is some responsibility on us as supervisors, and several of us have been to that course already.
Okay. I guess this question is maybe for a combination of you guys. Is there an opportunity to pay these inmates, or provide these inmates more financial resources? You know, paying an individual under $20 a day for hard labor seems, well, the city, quite frankly, has had a troubling past with convict leasing, and I don't, and this is, seems a little troubling. So is there an opportunity for us to pay more money to the inmates, like, per hour or per day, or however it's calculated?
Yeah, let me make sure, I want to make sure I frame this properly. And this doesn't equate to convict leasing, in essence. These are women who are in a classification at their present time at the facility where there are no work opportunities outside the facility for them but for with a state or municipal government at this particular point. So what we like to do is partnership with local government. It's important to remember that food, housing, everything that these offenders need is currently already provided through taxpayer dollars. So they have no cost to them. So we use this as an opportunity for them to gain useful and beneficial job training And so without these types of opportunities, we don't get, they don't get the opportunity to partner and to be out in a community where they can actually learn a useful job skill, where they can subsequently upon release become competitive with other individuals who are applying for employment. But clearly, the Department of Corrections takes very seriously our constitutional responsibilities. And we're in no way do not, have not, and will not participate in any activity that is demeaning, dehumanizing, and so forth. And I mentioned that I'm in the Montgomery office. And so as such, if you've heard of State Motor Pool, for example, there are offenders who are at the Red Eagle Facility. They go to work there. They do things like wash cars, they do mechanic work, change oil, rotate tires, do different things like that. And that's an opportunity, and they have no cost to them while they're at the facility. Everything that they need is provided. And this is just an opportunity that we partner with, with some other stakeholders. But for this particular classification of individuals, this opportunity with a state or municipality is basically what's available at this particular stage.
Okay. You said something about where they are in their sentence, maybe?
Yes, sir.
Do you mean that they're at the end of their sentence? Does that mean, or what do you mean about where they are?
Yes, sir. And I mentioned earlier that I too was a work release warden at a men's facility. Within the department, we have classifications. And if you think about custody level, people think about maximum custody, medium custody. So if you think about a maximum custody individual, let's say if it's a woman offender, they would be at Tuttwaller. Here at the work release facility, we have minimum custody individuals, but they are not, it's in a lower level, but it's not entirely the lowest level of custody. So we look at custody levels and then determine where in that transition and reentry process that we can collaborate. And for this population, we can have external opportunities with state and municipal governments as work opportunities, training opportunities, and so forth.
So it's my understanding that a lot of the inmates at this facility have matriculated from Tuttwaller. Is that correct, or is that incorrect?
No, sir. That would be correct. That would be correct. But it's important to keep in mind that an individual could, based on the length of their sentence, could come into Tuttwaller this week and three or four months later, based on the length of their sentence, be at a facility like this.
What are the, is there a level of crime that they've been convicted with where they're allowed to be out? Like, is there a determination based on their conviction where they're allowed to participate, or is that taken into effect?
Oh, it is taken into effect. It's one factor, but it is not the only factor. Obviously, their behavior, the length of time that they have remaining are also taken into consideration.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. And I believe Chief wanted to have a, make some comment.
Yes, this will be quick, Madam President. And to Counselor Williams' question, I think Chief Smiley also spoke to the training on Friday. So a part of what's been built is support curriculum around more than just the work piece, because the goal is to create a runway or a path for these ladies to literally be able to, at some point, go into a profession, hopefully with, maybe with us. And that's a part of the partnership with DPW. So did want to note that the mayor's concerns are here loud and clear. The mayor's concerns are yours, which is why the curriculum and the program is bigger than just the work part. It's also the development part, too.
Counselor Tate.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Chief and Madam President. I just want to kind of like clarify some things with my colleague. One thing that I really want to caution people on is the language that we use, calling those that are incarcerated inmates. So, you know, we call them confined citizens. And so what I can tell you, Counselor Williams, from my prior experience with my son being incarcerated, he did have, his custody level did drop because that's determined by classification. And so he had an opportunity to participate in a minimum out, as Commissioner Williams is talking about. One thing that I was very clear when I sat down with the mayor and his team was making sure that we center the voices of those that are in these confined spaces and making sure that we got a survey so we can assess the needs of what these women wanted to see. And one thing that I was very, very clear about is the language. And I heard you loud and clear when you say with the DPW employees, like, if I was a DPW employee and not in a supervisory level, that's not an opportunity that someone that's confined coming out into a workspace, they will be supervised by a supervisor, somebody at a high level of supervision. And so I was very intentional, you know, with the mayor and his team. And this wasn't an overnight process for me, because I really had to really think about it, guide them, give them, you know, being in a situation that I've been directly impacted and also serving as a probation and parole officer, where I had the opportunity to participate in reentry. Because I do believe that none of us are perfect. People deserve a second chance, and I believe in humanizing those individuals that have made mistakes. And so we have to, as Commissioner Williams said, I've, you know, been around corrections almost close to 20 years or better. And I know from my experiences being the liaison, going to the Walton County Department of Corrections, you know, telling people about probation and parole and reintegrating you back into society, and even being able to supervise individuals that deserved a chance and jail wasn't the place for them. So in these instances, people have made mistakes. They have paid their debt to society. And it's not just the state of Alabama, it's across the nation. And so that's, we got to get, you know, to that point. And so, Madam President, if you would allow me, I do have Ms. Deana Dickerson, who's here from the Offender Alumni Association, who is also, is leading, one of the ladies leading the HAVI, the hospital-based violence intervention program, to speak, you know, on her past experiences and why it's important, you know, at this time. And the reason, and like I said, they can tell you, this wasn't the easiest task with me. It was going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. And I did have an opportunity to go to the work release center to, you know, talk to the ladies and listen to what they needed, like, what, this all was built on. And I was very adamant about pushing a survey out to these women and surveying them, not what you want to see, what they need. Because as, if you look through your package, it says here, "Nothing about us without us." So you can't move things about me and you're not talking to me. And it says, it's clear, "Nothing about us" is a slogan used to communicate the idea that no policy, no policy should be decided in any representative without full and direct participation of the members of the group. And I was very adamant about that when I sat down with the mayor and his team. So, Madam President, if you would allow Ms. Deana Dickerson to come forward, I think she could speak.
Let me go ahead and just continue with the presentation as we had planned for this particular segment, so that I can be sure that counselors get their questions out to the individuals that were actually planning to, or going into negotiations with, based on the council's approval of whether this plan would be put in place. So let me just continue with this. Thank you. Any other questions regarding this particular item before us? I do have a couple of questions I just wanted to ask, and be sure that points have been made so far that I'm clear on those. When we talk about point of reentry, and I know you said there are different levels of that, could you reiterate again what level or what point of reentry these individuals, these 25 ladies or people would be recruited or, you know, given this opportunity?
Yes, ma'am. They are what we would deem as at the final stage of the period of incarceration. When an individual make their way to a work center slash work release, then they are eligible for release either by way of parole, they are near the end of their sentence, which we refer to as EOS terminology, or they are serving a split sentence, and they are in close proximity to completing the imposed portion of that split. And then subsequently following that, they'll transition onto probation.
And I know there's concern regarding the compensation that is being proposed. And I just want to ask, in other programs like this, is this something that is a standard within these type programs, or is there opportunity for additional compensation that could take place, or is this something that's standard along these lines for this type of program?
It is standard, Madam President, at this particular stage. I mentioned earlier, there are, on the male side, many individuals who are at work release centers or at work centers who are currently working in a capacity with a local municipality or some state agency. So, it is a, it is pretty much standard. And I kind of hearken back to the fact that these individuals have no expenses, and we really deem it as an opportunity to address a big issue. Idleness is a big part, but an opportunity to get outside of the facility, for one, and people are typically happy about that. But there are some legitimate job skills that can be gained from these relationships.
Let me ask, perhaps this is one that I should ask the city. So, if we're paying, what would be the number of hours that this individual might work? Would it be a full eight-hour workday? Or has that been taken into consideration as beginning, as well as the skills that you'll be utilizing them to perform?
The plan that was submitted would be eight hours a day for four days a week, and the fifth day is a training day. With lunch breaks, of course, seven to three is eight hours.
Are there any programs that ADLC has that they're compensated at a different rate than what's being proposed to us today?
Not in this particular classification and not in our custody. There are some programs, like for example, we run a auto mechanic shop, if you will. So, so many individuals are working there, they are compensated. Other individuals that work in our Department of Corrections Industry Division, some drive trucks and stuff, they are compensated. Individuals that work in the Montgomery area in our print shop, they are compensated. So, this is just another group of individuals now. Clearly, as individuals transition to the lowest level, then there's some other opportunities. But for this particular focus, I think it's important that we draw ourselves to the classification that these individuals are in. It is limited to what type of external engagements that they would be eligible to participate in.
And I can understand, I see that.
It's restricted by classification to some level.
I guess in my heart, I'm just looking for something that's, like this is a workforce development pipeline, per se.
Like, are they required to do the Friday?
Right. So, thank you. But let me ask this. So, because the skills that we are, the training that they're going to be provided, is our hope then that the skills, the skill will be able to be used outside of incarceration? Or is this an opportunity?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Absolutely, Counselor. That is the exact focus. We cannot guarantee that this pilot would lead to employment with the city.
Mm-hmm.
But that's really the goal.
Okay.
At the end of this, is that there's transferable skills that are gained that would put somebody in a position to be captured by us or by some other organization, municipality, et cetera. That is the goal.
I do understand, I want to be fair to Counselor Williams. And looking at the historical nature of the city of Birmingham, and I'm in leadership Birmingham, our first day in leadership Birmingham was talking about the use of workers in Sloss Furnace and other areas in the iron ore industry, and what that compensation looked like, or how people got into that program. And so, I do want to be sure that we aren't, you know, creating something similar, or that we're looking at every opportunity here, because I do want people to have an opportunity to have a skill, or to have an opportunity, or as you said, the ladies are, they want to get out of there and get into mainstream, or get into an opportunity to be outside every day and working with people. So, that's just, those are my questions and what I want to be sure that I have answered for me. And I don't know about other counselors, but that's something that I want to answer.
Well, Madam President, we share those objectives clearly, absolutely, fully.
All right. And you had, you were asking about the training. I think I took, you had a question, or was it just a comment about is Thursday, is Friday mandatory?
Is the Friday mandatory for the people that are picking up garbage Monday through Thursday? Like, is the Friday training mandatory?
Do they really just work a four-day work week? I guess we're bombarding you with this one question, but yes.
Yeah, it's really, it's a four-day, four-day.
It's a four-day work week.
So, it's not mandatory?
So, I mean, we haven't put the term mandatory there, but Friday is limited to the training. So, if you're, I don't think we're going to force anybody to do it. It's an opportunity, like Counselor Tate mentioned, "Nothing about us without us." There's a survey that the participants are filling out, and that's going to guide what's offered on Friday. So, it's the feedback from these individuals that will frame the agenda for those Friday trainings. So, we're hoping that they will want to take advantage of that.
Counselor Woods.
I got that last comment gave me another question, but I like the idea of giving, creating the opportunity to come in and get the real-world work experience, but the cost is, I wanted to speak or ask specifically about what, is it policy? Is it law? Like, what is it that governs the, what you can provide monetarily to confined citizens?
Yes, sir. It is, it is, it is policy. And given, in the department criteria, there are levels of custody where individuals are eligible to, we'll say in the lowest custody level, individuals can work in the community, in the private sector. This is that level just above that, if you will. And given that, they are not eligible then to, supervision-wise, to be in a publicly, in the public sector for employment. So, this is that level just above that, if you will.
No, no, I'm with you there.
So, in essence, it is, it is policy that is created as a result of the statute that governs corrections, if that makes sense.
So, I mean, is there something written that dictates what value you can provide to someone? Like, is this just the way y'all do it? Or is this, you know, something that prevents you? Like, if you say you're going to pay them $21 a day, are you prevented from doing that?
Are we preventing you from?
Are you unable to, can you allow that?
If you said, if you want to pay, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that part.
Like, what is it that restricts the number at $20?
If you chose, if you chose a different figure or a higher figure, would that be prohibited?
Correct.
No, sir.
From the city paying the, I would remember Department of Corrections?
Yes.
So, we consulted with our legal counsel. Unfortunately, our attorney couldn't be here, he's ill today. We consulted with him about this question. Is there a way for us to compensate this group? And the response we've gotten is that there is not. Now, we've still been thinking about other ways to make this, you know, potentially more palatable, and we've got some thoughtful ideas about that. But it's my understanding that we can't dictate that. We're falling within the law and within their policy and doing the most. We've added a number of things at the urging of Counselor Tate and the mayor, et cetera. And so, we've tried to make this, the wraparound services as strong as possible. We're even entertaining, I resisted sort of sharing this, but entertained that if somebody were to gain skills and experience through this pilot, and if they were released and were seeking employment by the city, what we do control is how they enter the city, like what step or grade they're at when they, when they actually gain that employment. Those are ways that we've thought to creatively give back in exchange for this participation in this pilot.
Like I said, love the idea of creating the opportunity. I think this is something that needs to be more of, but when you assign a dollar figure to something, and that, you know, that dollar figure is $20, like I know, I just know where that's going. Like, just being here in the city my whole life, I already know what that takeaway is going to be. And so, I'm not hearing enough of a, there's not a wall, this just seems like policy, some level of policy. I'm not sure if that's just the way the program was written initially, but I don't hear anything that truly prohibits making adjustments there. And even if it is policy, Counselor Abbott taught me when I got here that we just change it from time to time. So, that's what I'm saying, and so.
Thank you. I'm not sure if they have an answer. You have something, Counselor?
Oh, no, no.
That's what he's asking.
Did you have an answer? Do you have an answer or comment for Counselor Woods? Counselor Woods, he's, wanted to answer your question. Go ahead, Deputy.
I apologize, sir. Was that in terms, your question in terms of whether the department could compensate?
Do you have flexibility in basically the agreement with the city on the number? Like, is there flex, like, is there flexibility?
Is there flexibility in agreement that we have with the city in terms of what the city will compensate?
What we pay the ADLC.
We typically agree and negotiate, so there's always, there's always room for negotiation. But this disagreement is in, well within range of what the compensation is for this classification of offenders in other, working with other municipalities around the state. So, this is clearly not outside that scope.
Okay. Chief?
Yes. Counselor, your question is pointedly, is there room for the figure to be higher than $20 an hour, right? $20 a day. And a part of what we have been told is the answer is no. What we can do is go back again, and Chief Smiley, I think that's the discussion that they're having, if there's flexibility, because we've expressed, the mayor's expressed the same concern, so is our team. The answer that we've gotten is no. But what you're saying is if it's policy and it's something that can be moved policy-wise, you'd like for us to consider moving that policy. But the answer that we've gotten to this point is no. We will follow up with them to see if there's flexibility in moving the policy. All right? The question is, can we pay more than $20 a day? That's just the direct question, and we will follow up on that. We've pushed on that, too.
Yeah, I mean, my concern is putting all, putting everybody in that situation, being, you know, what Birmingham is and the history here, to do that. And it's an interesting one, because there has to be some benefit. So, you know, a lot of places, you know, people work, work release, things like that, don't get paid, but there are like benefits, whether it's at the facility or, you know, equates to overall time served, things like that. But like I said, when you assign a dollar value to it, then that becomes immediately to the forefront, so, yeah.
Thank you. Counselor Abbott did have a question or comment.
Yeah, and my comment is that this looks to me like a win-win for the city of Birmingham and these people who are leaving the justice system, I guess. They're on their way to leaving. When I was at AT&amp;T, I was in charge of the co-op and intern program, and they were not very well-paid, but they got job experience and the possibility of a job offer when they got out. And that was worth its weight in gold. I'm not terribly concerned about the $20. When I first read it, I thought, wow, that's not much. But if they had to pay the state back for their room and board the whole time they've been incarcerated, well, then, you know. So, I just see this as a win-win for the city. There are some risks, but there are some great rewards. And heaven knows, as hard as we've been looking for employees, if we find good people who want to work and are enthusiastic, it seems to me that the city just, we win. And certainly, if a person doesn't want to work and they don't care, they'll go by the wayside. But I see this as a win-win for anyone who's motivated. And if you're sitting around, I mean, I'd rather do anything than sit around, anything. So, and maybe everybody doesn't feel that way, but I want to be moving. So, to me, the fact that they don't want to sit around and do nothing all day, and they want to work, I just see this as something where everybody wins, or has the opportunity to win. So, I'm good with it.
Thank you. Any other comments, counselors?
For this particular item, this is a presentation that will come before the council, or for council consideration later. This was presented to us today for information.
We do need to vote.
What was it? We do need to vote to move it to?
Yeah, so the item before the council is the actual agreement, so.
So, it is the agreement?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
So, we look for a recommendation.
With the letter of understanding, so you said that there's going to be HVAC work involved?
They're certified.
If they're already certified.
Yeah, if they are qualified to perform that type of work.
Okay. Just because the letter under, of understanding specifically states that they would be performing tasks near a roadway.
Say it one more time.
The letter of understanding that we have specifically states that they're to be performing tasks near a roadway. The sentence is much longer than that, but I was just wondering if.
I don't understand the question, I'm sorry.
Well, I guess I was curious what HVAC work they were going to be doing, because the letter of understanding states that they will be performing tasks next to a roadway.
Oh, I mean, they're performing various tasks. Like, everybody's not doing the exact same thing, so I don't.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you very much.
Not what the letter says, though. Not what we're signing, but all right.
All right, counselors, so can we entertain a motion in a second to move this item forward?
Madam President.
Or we're going to lose our corner?
Madam President. I move that we send this to the full council for consideration.
Very good. Is there a second?
Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposers?
Opposed.
One oponent, so we do move this item to full council. Thank you. Thank you all very much. At this time, adjourn the meeting. Second, thank you, meeting adjourned. Thank you all.